Refuse to send my letter. Refuse to send my letter to terminate him from there. It's been going on for several months. The issue hasn't been addressed, uh, to me, the right way. You're gonna do it, you're gonna do it the right way. You address this person, you put this person off, you put the same person off for doing the same thing, which is wrong. Wrong is wrong regardless of who it is. Now, I'm saying to the city, the mayor, the council officials, we have to do something about this. We have to combat this thing and we have to do it the right way. I, I have no idea what the future may hold for me, but I got something coming up behind me that's over there, that's nine years old, that hears everything that's going on. When, when, when things are being done wrong and he addresses it and I address it, then I think it should be a change. It has to be a change. It has to be a change, period. It has to be a change. I'm fully, I'm fully aware of what I'm saying and how I'm saying it to who I'm sending it to. I am. I, I, I want people to be treated right. I want treat, people to come in and be able to enjoy the city of Camden and not have to worry about this or being treated that way or being treated any other way. I want everybody to be treated fair. I'm, I'm an advocate for that, for just that. I love Camden. Now, if you can't treat me right, don't take it out on him. Don't take it out on her. Don't take it, take it out on yourself because what you're doing is wrong. Because what you're doing is wrong. Now, that's, that's my seat from the planning commission, which it needs to be some changes made. And I will say to the mayor, to the city, it has to be done at the top. Someone has to be removed because of the changes that was made was not right. Someone has to be removed. The umbrella says that we're under you here, under the city council. Regardless, that's how it goes. We work together, not against each other, not aligned to each other, not misleading each other, but work together. That's where I stand as far as the planning commission. Now, I'm gonna step aside and put them aside. Now, I'm, I'm, now, my time hasn't been up for five minutes because I have a son that I can, that I can speak for for another five, okay? Now, this is personal. It has got personal with me. I've got several letters from Queens that was not right, was inappropriate. I've got these letters for a while, for a while, yes, and it's not right. I've had business here in this town with some ladies. They was mistreated because of what they was doing. It was personal, that what they, what the, what they said the law was, but it wasn't the law. It was not the law. It was wrong. It was really wrong. They refused to come back. They said, "I don't wanna have more business with you." I'm an entrepreneur here. I believe in that certain, I believe in bringing it in. And I believe in putting it out, but I believe in putting it out the right way. Mayor, city council, our code enforcement office needs to have some adjustments. It needs to have some adjustments and it adjusts these be within the book. Don't tell me that there's no bylaws. Don't tell me there's no bylaws, but when you sit in a meeting, you tell me that there are. But when you get called out, we don't have any. Don't tell me that. Don't tell me that you got the personal rules in, in this thing, which is wrong, and we don't have it on paper. Don't tell me that. Yes, sir.
Is it, is there something?
In particular, that I wanna talk about?
I mean, I, I can, I mean, I hear what you're saying. If this is the same issue you came to me about, I sent you to an individual and it has not been resolved.
It has not been resolved, sir. I be told one thing when I sit in our office, but when I get out of that office, it's a different story.
Am I telling you a different one or?
No, sir.
Okay.
No, sir. Let's make it clear. Code enforcement is telling me different. That's told me different. What we gonna do? Yeah, I, I make a, I make it. We do different. Totally different. I have, I have a book of things that have happened to me. Yes, I do. I have, and I'm tired. I'm truly tired. I shouldn't have to go through and deal with this kind of stuff. No one should have to go through and deal with the things that they, that code enforcement is doing. There's a lot of things, a lot of things that's happening here in this town. And do I hear it? Yes, I do. I'm sure you all hear, but there has to be some changes made. There has to be some changes made. I don't know what the future holds.
What do you recommend?
What do I, what do I recommend?
What are you recommending as?
I would recommend that you let him go.
Let who go?
Travis Daniel. I'm gonna make it plain and clear. Travis Daniel. Now, because this mayor, the city council, I'm tired. I'm tired. It has cost me. It has cost me. It has cost me. I'm not talking about money, but I'm talking about a mental anguish, and I don't like to get there. I'm not saying I'm gonna do anything to him, but I'm saying this right here. Things need to change. Not just for me, but for somebody else that come through that door, somebody else to go in there, somebody else to walk down that street. It needs to change, mayor. City council? If you, if you need my information or my number, I can give it to the city council. They can call me. Because it needs to change. Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else?
My name is Sam Lee and I live on six oh three Texas Street. And I'm here, um, to say that since the beginning of the year, you know, I noticed that our area has been going down. And so I've made calls and I've spoke to, um, the, um, council here, uh, um, so, and, um, to try to see, you know, where are we at with, uh, our community coming up. And I brought some pictures because I wanted to just really, you know, it's one thing to come in here and say that, you know, our roads are bad and, you know, the grass is not getting cut, you know, our, our town is going down. But I brought the pictures so that you can see. I like to pass these around. And, and I'm just not here just to say, you know, make the city kind of fall in short of, um, what we have been accustomed to. I, I don't know what's going on with the city. I don't see the city workers anymore. It used to be we, we would have somebody come around and patch the roads and, you know, somebody would come and cut the grass on the side of the road. We'd eat around the stop signs. You know, uh, we have none of that going on anymore. There's nobody coming around picking up the trash on the side of the road. I mean, our neighborhood, not just my neighborhood, and I live on Apple and, and, uh, Texas Street, but I took pictures even right here in the city, uh, off of Ca- you know, the next road over from California, which is Washita. I mean, if you don't mind, I'd like for you all to see. And I kinda, uh, put, put a, um, writing on it to let you see. That's been like that for two months. My road has been, you know, sadly looking for a month and the road's even worse. And I'm like, I know, you, you, we not, may not have a lot of money, but we got a machine, I'm sure already, even if you come and, and, you know, upgrade up the road and smooth it back out, that's better than what we going with tearing up our vehicles on our streets. So, I'm here also to say that I'm willing to volunteer my time to come, you know, to help the city out. I mean, I can operate equipment, backhoes and whatever else needs to be done. I'm, I'm willing to, to give you all free my labor to, to, um, accommodate what needs to happen to clean up this, this city. You know, I care about my neighborhood, but I also care about when someone come to this town and see what I'm seeing and it's not, it's no upgrade been done since, since the beginning of the year. I have not seen city workers. I don't know what has happened, you know, but nobody's coming out. Our area look a mess. Washita, right, Washita is a street right off the next street over from California, which is the main street. And I mean, even driving here, I noticed that that little loop right there in front of the post office, you could tap your vehicle right in that little curve. I mean, I know we might not have a lot of money, but we can pack something, uh, a hundred feet or somewhere, um, uh, every six months or something, you know. I know we got something. Or if we don't, you know, I'm willing to help. And, uh, y'all keep the pictures.
Mr. Mayor, uh, I've been working with Ms. Lee and, and she's been diligent trying to clean her area. And, and I brought things, I've been to this three ministrations sitting here about that area out there. There's never been a road done in that area that I know of since I've been on this board. I'm, I'm, I know, I know we only have a limited amount of money to do things, but we went one whole administration and we didn't do anything. And I'm, I'm not slinging mud on anybody. I'm just telling you the facts. We didn't do any streets. We didn't do no overlays. And, and, and I'm like her. I just think that at some point, we gotta do something.
So, if we moved half a million dollars to help to fix streets, we were getting ready to call a meeting and we forgot to do a media notice and could not host the meeting to have an opportunity to prioritize streets together. And so, we just need to reset that particular meeting. I think some of you got to call and on your way to the meeting.
Mm-hmm. I was on my way.
Hold the meeting. We could not have the meeting because, um, media has already sent me, uh, letters about.
I understand.
So, I can't, I can't do, uh, I got one from the newspaper in particular and I just, it's just a rough season for me to, uh, I don't know what to do.
I understand.
Follow the protocol and so, the right thing to do.
But, but the one thing I'd like to ask is for us just to revisit that area because that's an area when I went out and looked, I went back and there was brush, had been there since the last storm. And, and, and one lady I helped get it out of her driveway so she could get back in her driveway. So, I, I know we got a lot of area to cover, but I don't want an area to be neglected.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name is Sammy Brown. I stay at, uh, two fifteen February Road Southwest. And I've been at that residence probably for like twenty years. And my, uh, my breath is more like of, in the form of a question. I'd like to know, why was the sign that, uh, the traffic sign before you get to the red light, you got the red, the caution green, why was it moved after being in a, in, in one place for twenty years and put right dead center on my yard?
Can I get your address again?
Two fifteen February Road Southwest.
A sign was put in your yard?
It, it was a, the traffic sign that let you know that you coming to a red light. So, I just like to know, well, you know, for twenty years, it was in one place, just, you know, beyond my yard, kinda in between me and my neighbor's house, and then all of a sudden, a new sign goes over, a new post is fine, but, but I wanna know why I have to go around here every time I got a move now? When it was in a, in a, in a comfortable place and, you know, and the speed limit is what, forty? It's a small light, but it's kinda inconvenienced for me.
And I'm trying to imagine this location. Would that be a part of three seventy-six?
Yes, it is. Yes, I believe that state.
And I'm, I'm thinking the state moved it. No, we didn't move it. But I don't, I don't, I can't answer why they moved it.
Well, I'll, I'll get with them and find out, you know, why it was in, when, when something is in place for twenty years, twenty plus years, and all of a sudden you move it right up in, in the, in the middle of my yard.
But I'm, I'm hoping we could at least inquire about it.
Yes, I would, I would really appreciate it. It may be small, but it's, it's kinda inconvenienced for me.
Yeah, yeah. I, I just had to get the location down and I think that's what's, that's what went on there.
Yeah, and one more thing while I'm here, uh, how do you, you all calculate how much water you use? Well, I mean, I, I mean, my job, I read water meters every week. And how do you determine how much water usage you use?
Well, what little I know.
On a monthly basis?
I, I went at it once with them and, and there's a calculation between your usage and your sewage.
Okay.
It doesn't measure sewage.
Right.
But the calculation is based on how much water usage you do.
I know the sewage and, and something else like twenty plus dollars and, and, uh, I'm just, you know, I'm wondering how, how, uh, my water usage get, you know, get calculated when, when my meter is covered up and dirt open and everything.
That's no story. I understand.
And, 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 and I'm not saying it, uh, because they say, "Well, who you telling off on yourself?" No, I'm not. I wanna know how can you charge me X amount of dollars when my meter's not being read?
Do you have a new meter?
No.
I hadn't questioned it.
No. And, and when you come with a new, and I don't wanna see my water bill go up either. Because I've been before you all to let you all address the problem. And so, you need to come up with those calculations, so I need to know how you figure it because, like I say, the company I work by, I know how to read meters and I know how it goes.
Now, we're not responsible for reading the meters or calculation. I did it because I went and asked once because of my metering.
Okay, well, that's what I'm saying. How, how do you find out?
We're at the water department here.
Okay, okay.
And Mr. David Richardson is, who I'll give the message to.
What's his name?
Mister David Richardson. Will, uh, I'll make a note to speak with him, have him contact you if you don't get in contact with him first.
All right.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Is there another tonight? Well, thank you so much. At this time, uh, it would be the mayor's report. I just wanna remind us of this one thing. Uh, when we went through CDI, uh, which was, uh, Community Development Institute, we were given this booklet on today, which provides the information that they were able to recover. I have a limited number of them and we're going to make sure that the businesses in some other areas, uh, some other people get one. Uh, and I don't know if it's online yet or what have you, but it's the way other people view our community when they come through or when they pass by. And it's gonna be very important, uh, and one of the points that they made today is that community development and economic development, uh, go hand in hand. And so, we've got to, uh, work together as a whole community. The young lady was able to bring pictures, uh, to, um, to show us what a, what our community looks like. I promise you that those were people who put that trash out there. And some of those people probably live right here in our community. I challenge us as a community to do things within our own purview and not to make it other people's job to pick up behind us. So, if you have trash in your car and you just got finished eating at Sonic's or you just got finished eating at McDonald's, hold that trash in your car until you get to a garbage can. The devil is gonna tell you to throw it out the window, on the ground, so people run over it. Don't listen to him. Keep that trash in your car, trust me, until you get to a garbage can. And you put it in a garbage can. This is your house. This is your home. This is where you live. And when we do that, it represents you. And so, let's work together and, of course, it's enough blame to go around, but it's some things that we can do ourselves and we don't need other people to do. And I, I wanna, I wanna challenge us, those who can get one in your hand, to at least take a look and to see some of the things that people thought, people saw. And I have a limited number of them, but I'll be more than happy to share, uh, what I do have with us on tonight. Thank you, uh, so much, council. It's an old business divorce. Well, we begin tonight, then ordinance number eighteen nineteen, an ordinance established, establishing an entertainment district. Eighteen nineteen, that's right. And so, this will be introduced by Alderman.
Introduce it.
Bill.
Ordinance eighteen nineteen, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Camden, Arkansas, establishing an entertainment district and for other purposes.
We have a motion. Second. Is that a motion to suspend or motion?
First.
Is it a motion?
No, Andrew is still.
So, I'll move to approve.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you.
You need to suspend.
Wait, wait.
That was the motion.
Oh, 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 excuse me. Time out.
Motion to suspend the law.
We need a motion to suspend.
That's the first.
That's what, that's what he's asking.
Okay.
I mean, yeah, we can.
I wanna identify what, are we voting him?
Well, I was just trying to get us into discussion.
That's a discussion, all right? So, now, we have a mo- we have a motion to.
I think it's just a motion to approve. This is a discussion.
Motion to approve, second motion.
It's just a discussion.
All right, we're ready for the discussion.
Our motion is to suspend the law.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I, I have some comments on this. Got a lot of calls on it. Uh, first of all, this, I just saw this and this was the first thing I asked was, where is it gonna be at? What is the entertainment district? Uh, had to do a lot of quick researching and I could only explain about those that I've visited in other cities, so I didn't know what the layout was here. I've always had questions about the entertainment districts. Uh, my one question was, was, I don't feel comfortable with us just walking and drinking. Uh, I'm not against entertainment districts, but it has to be done in a manner where it's, it has to be very, very carefully managed. Uh, you know, we live in a, a right to carry state. And, and I was, I was at one entertainment district. I won't call the name of it and, and everybody had a gun on their side. Guns and alcohol don't mix. And I felt uncomfortable. I really did. I'm a girl, you know, I don't, I don't have a problem with gun owners. You understand what I'm saying? But I have a problem with gun owners carrying their guns when they're drinking in an open environment and freely. Because I don't see anything in here that covers that. Yes, sir.
It's completely illegal. If you are in possession of a firearm, drinking alcohol is illegal, period. That's state law.
Is that really, now, the state law that I read through the legislature is that they gave us free open carry?
You can carry a gun, but if you're drinking alcohol.
I wanna know where it is.
The law should be carrying a gun.
If you can guide me to that law sometime before we leave tonight. Now, I wanna research it.
I don't have a Arkansas state law book in front of me.
No, sir. No, sir. Just guide me to it.
Hey, I, you can go and read the, um, the attorney general's report on it. Go to the attorney general's webpage.
On carry?
Yes.
Okay.
It's all in there.
All right. I'll go back and look at it again.
Oh, we have an attorney sitting right here at the table.
I'm looking forward.
Director.
He's looking for it. He's looking for it.
Uh, that's a good issue. I'll, I'll.
Well, I'm, I'm just concerned because, and, and, and I seen some people that were, I would classify, I'm not an officer like the chief, but I had, I saw some people that I would classify as, done had too much. But they was, they were packing.
If they're carrying, any alcohol is illegal.
Okay. Okay. I just want us to look at all the things that's involved in an entertainment district. And, and, and like I said, when you, it talks about moving containers from different businesses and not having a, a, bringing your own container and it has to be in a cup when it leaves this one or that one. You're still getting drunk. I don't care what you put it in.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I kinda understand what he's, where, what he's getting at. I'm saying, I looked at all the restrictions on what the volume that you were allowed to carry.
Yes, sir.
Had to be in a cup with someone's logo on it, with the statue. I, I don't think anybody's gonna get drunk on the, the, the eight ounce cup or whatever it was that said you're gonna have.
But, Mr. Lindsay, do you know what he drank before he got there?
Well, no, I don't.
Okay.
But, like I say, it looks like there were enough restrictions on that, but from my view, I don't see it being a problem.
Okay.
Just to secure it.
Sir. Yeah, well, my question is, and, and, and while I understand your concern as well, Little Rock just opened up that entertainment district. It's going good. Like I said, it takes, uh, takes a lot of patrol.
Lot of manpower.
It's, it's, it's being managed real well, but, um, my question is, is, is this like, uh, festivals or?
This would be?
This is not all the time, right?
This is, according to the ordinance, it would be any Thursday, Friday, or Saturday, uh, between a set certain of hours, uh, it's four thirty P M. to twelve P M. Uh, and then it would also cover any, uh, approved, uh, holiday or, or, uh, event.
Now, see, uh, James, you got it stretched down to the, uh, Sandbar.
Yes.
And coming on uptown and all the statues.
I will say, it is a fairly large district. The reason I, I was debating on the area that I wanted to present to you, uh, I am open to any modifications. Uh, the reason I suggested that area is there's a lot of areas there that could use some development.
Well.
Uh, if I may finish, the, there, there are several lots right there that have been vacant. There are several lots with, uh, buildings that have nothing in it right now. Uh, this could potentially, uh, you know, encourage an investor to redevelop these properties. Uh, for example, uh, right behind, uh, at the corner of Jefferson Street and Madison, uh, there recently, uh, there is a person looking to put in a microbrewery there. Uh, this is something that he's working on and hopefully that will happen. Uh, this would, the entertainment district would encompass that and I would hope to see, uh, other things come through.
Well, again, my, my, uh, again, been to Little Rock, that district is just a strip. And it's quarantined pretty good. This is a pretty large area. And, uh, man, you can have a lot going on in this large area. And I don't know if we got law enforcement to be spread it out over this area like that. I mean, it, it, it would be nice if it was like, just say like they have the, uh, first Friday, where you can kinda quarantine everything and, and just that block. But, man, you got, you got a hefty area.
It is a large area. I, I will concede that. I, I chose that large of an area strictly for the hope that it could help spur some development investment in downtown Camden, which I think is sorely needed.
I, I believe.
Uh, as far as I, uh, I did speak with Chief Woody about this issue. Uh, at that time, we hadn't, uh, discussed the act, the, uh, boundaries of the area, but he did like the idea, uh, if I may say. Uh, Chief, have you seen this map?
No, not.
Okay.
I have it now.
Okay. Uh, if I may ask, Chief, do you, do you think the Camden Police Department would have a problem, uh, policing this, a district this large?
Yes, we would have it.
We would.
This is, like they said, this is a, a, a fairly large.
Fairly large.
Depending on the size of the, of the vent that was held down there.
Right.
No, I think it contained this much area.
Okay.
If it was, if you're just saying that that's gonna be the district and it might be in parts of it, yes.
Right.
First Fridays, we don't have an issue with. It's contained.
Right.
If you wanted to have it closer like the Sandbar and have, you know, have it in that area, we could not cover this entire district at one time.
Um, I mean, this is just large. Yes, okay, that's fine. Uh, here's a question. What if we were to eliminate the area south of Jefferson? It's, it's still fairly large?
We could do the mandatory Friday.
Okay.
And, and if I might, if I might ask, I'm, I'm, I don't wanna ask the chief to take all his resources and put it in one area.
Exactly.
We still got this city.
Yeah, right, exactly.
Let, let me offer a suggestion is that, like I said, 'cause I think it's a, a real concern is the, how much, and it needs a study group. Apparently, you find solo on draw this map.
Uh, I, I had a few, I, I had some advice from a few people, but yes, it was a fairly small group and I admit it could definitely use some more, some more voices.
They did have this event at First Friday where they had alcohol. Uh, I think there was a couple of First Fridays, you know, we did not have an issue in that size of the area. And they had a permit from ABC and that, that went well. But it, it was, it was contained.
Right, 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 right.
And it's a single event.
What about some of the sizes, say, the death of the rest of the?
That's about the same, yes, sir. We can handle that.
If, I'm trying to think what the proper protocol is if we want to table this for the next meeting. Come up with an amended map.
Could we just put it up for our first, uh, put it up for our first reading and then make an amendment on the, once we've discussed the map further?
Could, could we also add into that, we wanna admit it, let's admit. let's add, let's amend in here some things that need to take place and I'd like for, I don't have to be on it. Because I know how I'm going to vote already if it stays like this. But I'd like to have the chief on there so he can give his input because evidently we didn't ask him before we did this.
All right, so is there a motion then to?
Doesn't have to be a motion, I hear, it'll automatically carry over to the next month.
So you move to the next one?
If it's the first reading.
We move on to the next agenda, it should be on the next month, the second reading, I think on the board, they, they're talking about a, a committee. That's different, that, that would take a motion or somebody saying something, but as far as coming back, it'll come back.
All right, that's it, that's first reading. We're now at ordinance number nineteen nineteen, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for the purchase of rescue equipment for auto extrication. Introduced by Alderman.
Alderman, introduce it.
Ordinance number nineteen nineteen, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Camden, Arkansas, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for the purchase of rescue equipment for auto extrication, waiving the requirement of competitive bidding, declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
Is there a motion on the floor, you have a motion?
I saw one.
Second.
I've got a couple of questions for discussion.
Ready for discussion?
Uh, what's the big emergency? Into suspend bidding and buy something that wasn't an emergency?
I just, uh, Chief Nash.
We've had some issues with the, uh, with Stalin, slow to react and everything, uh, we had gentleman that does the repairs and stuff.
No, that one, it does not amplify yours, just a recording.
It's just a recording. Anyhow, we've had some issues on the last, uh, paper we had, we had some problems when we started looking at it. We have to come up and test it, it will still work, but at this time right now, we've got like about a twenty-five second delay. Once you start the tool to give the power to the end of the tool to the max. And once you, if you let off it all, it starts the whole twenty-five seconds over again. So unless you stay on it and keep on it, if you ever let go, you're a whole other twenty-five seconds. And that's a lot of delay when you're out there and you're dealing with a, a golden hour of trying to get, you know, from the time of accident over here and really, you know, get some help possible.
Uh, may I?
Yes, sir.
Is this extraction too, we're going to, uh, I, I was reading it here, but can, can you get a little bit more detail in it? Is it like the, the jaws of life or?
Yes, sir. I can't prepare you.
Can I hang up, stand please?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I was thinking, uh, I was just. And then the budget, the money is, uh, basically, it's already covered, we're not asking for anything to go beyond, other than, we've been looking at four thousand dollars, we've still come out of the public safety tax fund, which is already there. We had a side to side in the budget for this year. So we'd like to see that cut. We also have what they call a commie tool, we're going to go commie tool. Commie tool is not going to do what we need to do for extrication. It doesn't have the power, it's a single tool, so if that one single tool goes down, leaves you no tool, it's just not going to work, take those two and put them together, we, we fall about four thousand, some of our dollars, a little over four thousand, reaching the total amount of this thirty-two thousand. So we would have to go back in the public safety tax fund and pull an additional four thousand out of that to reach this amount.
Okay, now that answers my second question, I saw that movement of money from.
But it's basically not making two purchases, which I don't think are wise purchases for us. And it still leaves us about four thousand short to meet this amount, but we do have the money in the public safety tax fund.
But that was the reasoning from them, two different accounts?
Sir.
I read where that was two different accounts with?
The capital outlay.
Capital outlay and, and, okay.
But we're, you know, the tools are twenty years old, the pump is ten years old, they're needing replaced for sure and they're starting to have some problems and issues with them. And that to me is something that we don't need to be caught in position where tools just goes down.
This includes a new pump?
These units, these are battery operated.
These batteries.
The old ones were lines and you were stuck a hundred foot from the vehicle unless you took everything out, the pumps, the motors and all, and carried them off down there with you, these are all battery operated. Uh, Hearst, along with other companies, but Hearst says they only sell about two percent with hydraulic lines anymore, that's a thing of the past, they don't even, you know, don't even do that.
What type of battery power do these?
Sir?
What type of battery?
It's lithium batteries and they're, they're smart batteries, uh, batteries have a three-year warranty on them. The life of the battery is considered to be a thousand charges. Now, when they say a thousand charges, they're talking about a thousand full.
Full maximum charge.
If you just use five minutes, you have him again, you know, hurt the battery, so you're talking about a full charge, it's shoot, run to a full extrication for about sixty minutes before you lose the battery.
And what you have here, uh, all the stuff that you have ext out, but what you don't have ext out, like the battery charges and the, uh, cutter and the ram, is that what you're looking to get?
Yes, sir. Now, we're also going to be able, now, we're also going to be able to take these same tools over and have them at the fire scene, using the fire scene. You need to make quick extra entry into a door, you just put a pair in the jam and you open the door and walk right in. You get somebody trapped in a building, beam on or something like that, you know, you take the spreaders, walk right up in there with the spreaders open up, pull it out. It's a whole new ballgame as far as, you know, rescue drones on the fire scene or in a building or collapsed or whatever, because we've never been able to use the tools like that before, so there's several different advantages to it.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Uh, do you need to make a separate motion to suspend or is that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and put it up for third and final review.
Second.
So moved and second, ready for discussion? We need a roll call.
Moore?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Galbert?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Askew?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Argid?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Yes, darling.
You need a motion to.
Need a motion to approve. So, second.
Moved and second discussion. Roll call.
Argid?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Askew?
Yes.
Galbert?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
We now have ordinance twenty nineteen, amending chapter ten, fire prevention and protection, article three, outside fire protection of the code of ordinances of the city. This will be introduced by Alderman, Alderman.
Alderman.
Lindsay.
Second.
Ordinance twenty nineteen, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Camden, Arkansas, amending chapter ten, fire prevention and protection, article three, outside fire protection of the code of ordinances of the city of Camden and for other purposes.
A motion. So, second. A motion? A motion to?
I approve.
Suspend the rules.
No. He, he gave that.
No, I just introduced it.
He introduced it, that's all.
He said a motion for something.
She just.
Didn't say what.
Would a motion to approve?
That would have been a motion to suspend the rules.
Suspend the rules. All he did was introduce it.
They're supposed to just suspend the rule.
Right.
Is that what you're saying? All right, we got him, second. All right, we're ready for discussion.
Oh, suspension.
Discussion on the suspension. All right, roll call.
Bell?
Yes.
Galbert?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Askew?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Argid?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
The motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Moving second, I'm ready for discussion, Paul.
Who? I will, uh, question, what, what is it we're changing?
What are your feelings, sir?
Good morning.
And remember, remember, life is not for amplification.
It's a living that moves.
Okay, what it is, uh, getting ready to send out the contracts for outside fire protection and noticed the original was from ninety-eight and, I mean, in fourteen, I was privy to the discussions that took place to get the ball rolled, to change up the contract a little with the area out there. And we would be able to deal with the different industries directly. In doing so, uh, the former administration took around and implemented this right here, which was seven dash fourteen to replace ten thirty-five in the ninety-eight ordinance. And doing so, there's some wording that actually got missed and wasn't cleaned up. If you go on into section ten forty, these three part there. It, uh, has some wording there, first off, it's including international paper company, production, the actual mill. And it also includes in there that all structures that are owned or controlled by Highland Industrial Park will also be covered. Giving the false idea that I think exists out there to a lot of the entities that basically I don't have to pay outside fire contract because I'm an industrial park. But that's not the agreement that took place at Highland Industrial Area with Highland and with, uh, city when I was there. That Highland would still pay theirs. And then we would be responsible to deal directly with the different entities out there as far as billing. But I've noticed that our outside fire contracts would have fewer and fewer people that are paying and having outside fire contract with it. And I believe they have the misunderstanding that they're covered possibly by the Highland contract, which they're not. That was not at the agreement, now, as to the actual wording that's set in here, you may tend to give that, but that was not the agreement, that was not the understanding that was there. And it sort of contradicts the seven to fourteen, the way it was set up.
Now, have we notified these?
No, sir, that's why we have not sent out the deals yet, because we didn't want to send out the deals in full fusion.
Right.
And our goal is to clarify the contracts for next time.
Yes.
Not this time, we plan to use the same contracts now. Uh, but if we're using Washtau resources in Calhoun.
Well, yes, sir, but just to be honest, the last list we had, I think we had Highland Industrial Parks on there, NTS was on there. And there's two other little small companies that, well, I have an idea.
We still have General Dynamics on there.
But that, that, that's it, you know? So that's really and truly all of us covered, which it leaves the fire department in a situation up there. Where are we at? We have no clear picture as to, okay, these people aren't on the list, they didn't pay, so there's a fire out there, we're not going. And if we don't go, where's the leaves? This right here clears it up, it states in here in the whole ordinance, hey, if you didn't, if the city didn't grant you and approve your contract, you don't have a contract with the city. You're not only outside the city, you're outside the county.
Right.
Can't go on any other, and, and, don't get me wrong, that place out there really covers this city. I'm just trying to clear up some confusion here and protect us.
Okay.
Chief Nash, I understand the, uh, cleaning up the wording, but do the, do the price change, it still stays?
At this time, the, the price still changes. Honestly, my opinion, I think that needs to be revisited down the road somewhere.
So it stays?
Right now, all it is, is just cleaning up the price and the way it's laid out, the fee schedule is the same, nothing changes.
But you're going to be visiting and look, and look in the price made.
Yes, sir, because you're, right now, you're looking at somebody owns a house, the average size house in Washtau County is three point three people per household.